This will constitute the meeting of the Rainbow City Council for August fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-three, and I'm going to ask Anita Bedwell to lead us in our invocation. It'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Would you stand?
Let's pray. Lord, we continue with humble hearts and just in this thanksgiving for all the things that you bless us with and in the way, Lord, that you care for us and watch over us in everything that we do. Lord, be with us as we meet together tonight and that we just look to you for answers and things that are good for our city. And, Lord, just bless each one that's here and that they return home safely. We just thank you again for loving us and sending your son, Jesus. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you turn your cell phones to off or vibrate position, we appreciate it, and I'll ask the clerk if she'll take a roll call.
Anita Bedwell, here. Randy Weiss, here. Jeff Prince, here. Jamison Jenkins, here. Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Here. Number five is to approve the minutes of a regular meeting of July twenty-fourth of two thousand and twenty-three, and I'd entertain a motion that we do so. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? I'm going to skip number six. We're going to wait on it until towards the end of the of the meeting. Number seven is to authorize Mayor Taylor to sign the Tech Connect Gov. Contract for Online Payments for Business Licenses and Permits, one-time fee of sixty-five hundred dollars and an annual fee of seventy-five hundred dollars to be paid at the time of the system going live. The term of the contract is three years, and I'd entertain a motion that you give me that authorization. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number eight is a proposal for S and M E for Outfall Inspection and Illicit Discharge Screening. This is mandatory thing that we have to do to stay in compliance. That cost is twelve thousand nine hundred dollars, and I'd entertain a motion that you allow us to pay that and enter into that contract. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number nine is to purchase the following two thousand and twenty-three Chevrolet Tahos for the Police Department from Donahue Chevrolet from the state bid list for a total price of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-four cents. The V I N. Numbers are shown below, and I'd entertain a motion that you allow that that purchase. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number nine is to hire Parker Riggs as a certified police officer, and his start date would be August twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-three unless he can come on sooner, and that would be arranged by the police chief and Parker himself. And I'd entertain a motion that we make that hire. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number ten is a resolution, number twenty-three dash twenty-one. You've received these, and it's for a cybersecurity grant program, and you'd allow me to be able to sign for this grant, and I'd entertain a motion that we pass this resolution. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number eleven is also Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-two, and that's Rebuild Alabama Act, and that's for us to receive the the funding from that act, and I'd entertain a motion that we pass this resolution as read. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number twelve is Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-three, and that's Control, Management, Supervision, Regulation, Repair, Maintenance, and Improvement of Township Road, and I'd entertain a motion that we that we pass this resolution as read. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number thirteen is Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-four, and that's Control, Management, Repair, Maintenance, and Improvement of Delray Drive, and I would entertain a motion that we pass this resolution as read. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number fourteen is ordinance number five seventy-eight, and it's the rezoned property on Delray Street from M one to R one, and that's the P P I N. As shown, and this is a time for a public hearing. Is anyone that would like to speak for or against this proposal and this ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. You sure can. If you'll come up right here, give us your name and address, and we'll get you started on on being on the official record.
Yeah, my name is Brian Stansel. My address is sixteen oh four Cybert Drive, Glencoe, Alabama. And all we're really asking is we're deeding the city the road and a right-of-way to take care of the water problem off of Brown Avenue, and we're just asking to change that to residential. We're going to build two houses that are fifteen to sixteen hundred square foot and divide that. That's a zoned industrial. We're wanting it to be zoned where we can build those two, build two houses on it, and we can split it.
Yes, sir. It's actually zoned manufacturing. Yes, sir. That's fine. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak for or against? Hearing none, seeing none. I need a motion to introduce the ordinance. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Need a motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take a roll call? Include me?
Anita Bedwell, yes. Randy Weiss, yes. Jeff Prince, yes. Jamison Jenkins, yes. Clark Hopper, yes. Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Need a motion to adopt. Any discussion? Ask for the roll call.
Anita Bedwell, yes. Randy Weiss, yes. Jeff Prince, yes. Jamison Jenkins, yes. Clark Hopper, yes. Mayor Taylor.
Yes. We're down to departmental reports. Is there any department heads that have anything? Anybody with a public comment? Anybody'd like to speak to the council? Nobody? You guys came all the way down here for nothing. This one was quick. We do. We do appreciate you showing up, and we'll move on to the council member reports and comments, and we'll start with Mr. Weiss.
I want to thank everyone for coming out, and again, it's a pleasure to serve the people of Rainbow City. Things are looking up in this town, not that they were down to begin with, and they continue to. I'm excited about the new businesses that are coming to town, the new opportunities, and all the new residents. I can't go into Publix or Winn-Dixie or anywhere without somebody saying they're new to Rainbow City, and you must be doing something right if people want to move here. I also want to congratulate our law enforcement and first responders on because they're the really reason this happens, that we're the safest city in Alabama. Did I read that right? And that's a huge thing, and for any organization to be recognized as safest to anything, and that tells you that people want to live here. I was remiss a few months ago not announcing the renaming of the Etowah County Mega Sports Authority Soccer Complex. We renamed it, I guess it was about six weeks ago, the Sportsplex Rainbow City, or just Sportsplex R B C for short, and we're excited about that because that's where we're at, and that's and we've had a lot of people compliment on the facility, and I appreciate that for the work that Philip and Stacy and the entire Recreation Department, Streets and Sanitation, and all those guys have done to make that a place. We've had thousands of people, and I'm not exaggerating, thousands from out of town, from Dalton, Georgia, Rome, Georgia, Atlanta, Georgia, Mobile, Alabama, Trussville, I could just keep going, all these teams coming in, and every one of them said it's the best they best fields they've ever played on. And the mayor and I were in an article where a young man from, I think Norway, was quoted as saying they're the best fields he's ever played on. And that's, you know, to have the best fields that a kid from Europe, which is birthplace of soccer, says the best fields he's ever played on, it's amazing. So we're really proud of that, and it's something else that just makes the city a great place to live. Thank all you again for coming out, and we appreciate all you're doing. Thank you. Mr. Prince?
Thank you, Mayor, and I also want to thank everybody for coming out. It's, for some reason, it's a little more fun up here when there are people out there in those seats. So thank you, guys, for being interested in your city. That's what we all hope for, that everyone is interested in what's going on in Rainbow City, because as Councilman Weiss said, there is a lot of excitement. There's a lot of things going on, new businesses and opportunities that are coming here. And so it is good to see folks getting out and participating. So I do want to say congratulations to, and I know we hadn't done it yet, but to Brad Crosby for, we're going to do that in just a minute, Parker Riggs that we're going to hire with the Police Department. He's coming to the best, I believe. I believe that with all my heart. I want to thank also Councilman Weiss, mentioned it, and he didn't tell you, he is the chairperson of the Mega Sports Authority, also known as the Sportsplex of R B C now. He's done a lot of work, and he does this, he's got a full-time job as a teacher and a coach at Southside. He loves soccer, obviously. It has brought a lot of people in, which brings a lot of new opportunities and problems. And with that, I want to thank our Parks and Rec and Philip Hollingsworth and all of their staff. Philip didn't do everything, but he made sure everything got done, and I want to thank you for that because it is a reflection of our city when people do visit and come, and we are putting on a pretty first-class thing down there. So it's a it's a great time to be a part of this, and just thank everyone for coming out. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Bedwell?
Thank you. And Randy, thank you for the time you spent. It is a it's an awesome complex. If you've not been down there, it's a great place to drive by and look. The the road going in and out of that area is beautiful. Traffic is pretty heavy on Saturday, so that might not be a good day to sightsee. So but it is a really, really pretty place, and there's just so much opportunity to develop to develop different things down there, different athletic aspects, and we're just really excited to have it in our city. And to have something that we can be proud of, that our children can do, that will keep them at home and keep them entertained and and be a positive influence on for them and as they grow up and and become adults, and hopefully that will be a thing that they will always remember, and it will stamp something in their brain that, hey, this is a this is a good thing. So we're excited about it. There, there's just so many things happening in Rainbow City, and we're so proud of our city. It's growing. It's growing in a positive direction. So we're just, there's just, every day, there is something that the mayor has to take care of or likes to take care of, not a have to, but but we're all excited to be a part of it just because it's a positive thing for our city. But isn't it awesome to live in a city where you're number one in the state of Alabama for for safety? I mean, hey, guys, all of you, thank you so much. I appreciate being able to live here with you. So that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start by saying also, I appreciate everyone for being here. I want to echo the comments that have already been said about Councilman Weiss and our Sportsplex of Rainbow City. He does do a lot of work there that sometimes goes unrecognized, and it is hugely beneficial to our city and not just Rainbow City, but our county as a whole. And then I just want to talk about two other things that were on my mind that kind of tie in with each other. But tomorrow, we're having a groundbreaking at the near mega site that is going to be to recognize the construction of a five-hundred-thousand-gallon water tank. It's going to be essential to tying that property into Rainbow City's infrastructure as far as water and sewer goes, and that is essential for our entire county. And without the cooperation of Rainbow City, this council, and the county, and our county commissioners working together, that groundbreaking would not be occurring tomorrow. And the other thing I want to talk about is, we all know this past week, we had some terrible storms that came through Etowah County and Gadsden specifically, on Lookout Mountain off of Nakulua Road and Tabor, was affected tremendously, and I was actually working on the motor unit at the sheriff's office at the time because the world's longest yard sale was going on. And so we actually had to take our motorcycles back home and getting our vehicles so that we could go back up and assess the damage. And we ended up being at work all night that night and into the next day. But I ran into John Moore the next day, who works for the city of Gadsden, and they were just trying to assess the damage, and he made the comment, hey, we couldn't have done it without Rainbow City being available because we literally had every police officer, every fire truck, every rescue truck, everything tied up. We had nothing available. And so Rainbow City and some other neighboring agencies, particularly our fire department, was available to answer calls for the city of Gadsden if the need was there. And so both of those things are an example of cooperation between government agencies in Etowah County, and we are really moving in the right direction when it comes to that topic. So that's all I've got.
Mr. Hopper?
First of all, thank y'all for coming out, and I want to take a minute to congratulate the All-Star team from Coastal Lake who represented our area in the Little League World Series. They didn't get the outcome they wanted, but they made a great start to the beginning. I think this is what, the first year we've been back into Little League, and we actually won the state championship, and they got the chance to play for that title. Also, with high school football coming on, I want to wish a safe and successful season to our Southside Panther and Westbrook Warriors, and volleyball, too, and leave the girls out. Volleyball going on with both of schools, plus the junior high, Rainbow Middle, should be what? We got three football teams playing, not to mention the Rainbow City Crimson Panthers and Pee Wee. So that's four football teams we got down here, and then the volleyball and stuff like that. I hope they have a great and safe season. Last thing I want to do is I've been asked to pass on the condolences for the mayor and the rest of us as a council to former councilman Rick Hill, who lost his father. His wife Heather works up there in the building department. As we all know, I'm the one who succeeded Rick when I decided run. Me and him chit-chatted whether he was going to run or not because we've been longtime friends, and I appreciate you letting me do that. I've had the privilege of meeting Mr. Hill one time, but I just want to pass along condolences from the mayor and this council. And I'm turning it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Of course, just just a minute, and and I'll get you out of here. The the Safe City Award that came from that you saw posted on social media, that is an incredibly hard thing to do. This this police department, under both the the leadership and guidance of John Bryant previously in Camp Yancey now, has done that three of the last four years. That's not something that's easily done, and it's not something that we take lightly. And and we understand that, you know, we have a very, very small part in making sure that we equip these police officers with what they need, not only to keep them safe, but allow them to be able to do good work through technology and and also probably their most prized possession, other than their gun, is is their vehicles. And just tonight, we were able to purchase them some new vehicles, and I appreciate our police department and the leadership that that falls within. And these these guys go above and beyond, and I think we're adding a female soon. So we've got her about to head off to school, and so I'm just I'm just thankful for our police department in a major way. Our fire department showed up in a in a in a big way the other day for the city of Gadsden by going, and it was good that I got a picture of this, but our engine one was sitting in my old fire station at Central Fire Station in Gadsden, and that that gave me an opportunity to spread that love out to my former teammates on the fire department, and they they appreciated it in their own way. I'll say that. And and but I but I am thrilled to know that that we have that kind of cooperation and that kind of just strength in the brotherhood. Our street department was on the scene incredibly fast. We cleared out some areas in Tuckahoe Heights that I wasn't real sure we were going to get cleared out, but Michael and his guys showed up, brought our equipment, our trucks, and we were able to work independent from the incident command, some because we knew where we were. I knew where we were, and then we were able to guide some other crews and just help Gadsden to get some resolve in that situation. And and I appreciate our street guys for going up there and doing those things. Brad Crosby is officially retired. I don't think Brad was able to make it here tonight, and but but his his union brothers wanted to be able to give him just a token of their appreciation, and they'll be able to do that with Brad soon. This Tech Connect thing that we passed, it's it's a big step in the right direction for us in our revenue department to be able to 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 hurry along the process of you coming in and buying a business license so that we can put you out and and allow you to go to work in our city and do good work. Same thing goes with permitting up in our building department. It's just another way for us to streamline and take a little bit of that government feel out of the situation so that we're not all just sitting in chairs and standing in line, which is what it seems like you do a lot when you're dealing with the government. We would like to get to the point where we truly are paperless, and, you know, I'd like to see us where we're chairless, where we can do things in a in a fast manner and get things done and and get you about your business. And I think that's what it's it's an imperative on me and my staff to make sure that we give you a good product, and we give you incredibly great customer service, and that's what we will continue to do. And so in that, I thank Linda Cleveland. I know I put a, you want to talk about putting a lot of pressure on somebody. This is the lady that takes in all of our money, has to count it. We kind of sort it out and put it where it's supposed to go. I don't know how many accounts we've got. It's twenty-five accounts, and they let me sign on all of them. So go figure that. But it's just, it's just good to see that we have a team that that has the ability to go out and be be proactive and find a way to be able to shorten our processes up and 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 just to continue to serve this city. The near mega site, one of the things that's going to happen tomorrow is that groundbreaking, but we're going to be able to go out and spend tax credit money where Norfolk Southern Railroad has, over time, spent about six or seven million dollars on that site. That's not money that that was paid by the taxpayer. That's money that Norfolk Southern owed to the state of Alabama, and our governor, Ivy, allowed that to be to kind of bypass the the coffers in Montgomery and come straight to our site. And we've been able to not only do infrastructure, but the county's been able to put a hundred-acre pad. It's a pad-ready mega site, the only one in the state of Alabama. So knowing that, just understand that there's something great coming, and and it's it's going to change the face of of this region, not not just this city, but this region. And that's because we have corporate cooperation with with companies like Alabama Power and Spire and Norfolk Southern, as well as our our own water and sewer utility. We're we're able to take money that we're receiving that we would not normally receive in the form of tax-paid proceeds and and putting it to work for this city by extending sewer lines and and making loops and bringing bringing about redundancy in our sewer and water. And those are great things, and those are opportunities that would absolutely just be missed if we couldn't capture some of this tax credit money that's coming from these large corporations. So when people say things about large corporations, they can understand one thing. We've, we're grabbing as much of that money as we possibly can to rebuild and get ready for the next big move for Rainbow City and for this region. And I see now that Brad made it in, and we're going to allow his brothers to come up and and make a presentation to him, and we'll get Brad to to speak for about, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty minutes, something like that. But you can tell he went out just a little bit sooner than 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 his actual retirement date, but you'll you can tell that by the length of that beard. But but if you want Brad coming up, and I'm going to turn it over to Jeremy Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the others of you that don't know me, my name is Jeremy Hawkins. I am a captain with the Rainbow City Fire Department, Secretary of Treasurer for the Rainbow City Professional Firefighters Association. And traditionally, when a fireman retires, we look at presenting that person with a token of appreciation for the years of service that they've dedicated to the city and the the fire department. You can tell I'm not a public speaker. I'm nervous. tell I'm not a public speaker. I'm nervous. So Brad, thank you for the 25 years that you've given to the city of Rainbow City, the fire department, and the citizens. So we would like to present you with a non-traditional fire department gift. Normally, like I said, the traditional gift is a golden axe, and you had made a statement many years before you retired that you were going to be doing a lot of traveling. So we have gifted you, sir, a brand-new travel guitar.
And, and Brad, if you'll notice on the front of that, they embroidered that so you wouldn't forget me. That's a Taylor guitar. Yeah, yeah, just a little something for you.
Thank you guys for making 25, no, you all, 25, but everybody that's sitting up there has made this gift. Some of you have been there for a long time. Everybody up there has made it a great place. The best 25 years of my life, yes, a little less than half my life, I know. Probably look like I'm 25 right now.
Absolutely.
But yeah, it's been a great, it's been, I really enjoyed it. I did ask for the guitar I was talking about because I asked if everything works out good and like it's supposed to. Within a couple of years, I'll be living six months in Mexico and, and six months up here, so they won't let me carry an axe on the airplane.
That's true. That's true.
Right, right. We also have a small card that is full of fire department supportive phrases and sayings.
And I, and I had said, I had told Jeremy, if everybody wanted to take a sharpie, just write something on the guitar. And I thought, well, yeah, could be.
I myself play guitar, and I can't do that to a brand-new guitar. It's not going to happen.
So Brian?
Yes, sir. We appreciate you, Brad. Thank you for your service.
Mr. Mayor, that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. My last thing, just want to congratulate Parker Riggs for coming on to what I consider the best police department, no doubt, in the state of Alabama and in the southeast. And he's, he's going to have an incredible opportunity to be able to move forward in his career. He's a young man, very, very well-spoken, and you're going to be, you're going to be seeing him on the streets of Rainbow City soon, and he's going to be a good, a good community police officer. And with that, I'd entertain a motion that we adjourn. Thank y'all. Thank you for coming.